Hello and welcome back to the next episode of Spider-Man PS4.
MJ, did they start the ceremony yet?
They're still setting up. Where are you?
Got hung up at work. Be there soon.
Alright, we're swinging back into this game. So... I think for this whole playthrough, I'm just gonna stick with the advanced suit. I know a few videos ago I said, "Oh, I do this." It, I forgot. Yep, forgot.
You might have heard about the robbery at Roseman's Auction House. What you probably didn't hear, but my sources confirm, is that the perpetrators were wearing masks. Horrible demonic faces. Get another example of the explosion in mass criminals since Spider-Man came on the scene. Let's hear your thoughts. Here on with J. Jonah Jameson.
Yeah, I see your point, but Spider-Man stopped those guys today. Saying he's like them because he wears a mask isn't fair. It's like prejudice.
Wrong. Here's a little lesson in the English language, my friend. Prejudice means to prejudge someone before you know anything about them. I know all I need to about Spider-Man. He runs around coffee chains, wearing a mask so he doesn't have to answer for his shenanigans, and a flashy costume so he gets attention to feed his gigantic, insatiable ego. Now, if I'm a mentally unstable person and I see him getting all this coverage, what am I going to do? It's called copycat behavior, people, and it's ruining New York.
Obviously, J. Jonah Jameson don't know what he talking about. Spider-Man's cool. I just don't like to talk in cutscenes or dialogue boxes.
All units on alert. Reported robbery of an orphaned...
Except for those because like, let's be honest. I'm not gonna wait for every single one of them.
And we'll be right out front.
Sounds like a lot of people out there.
You'll be fine, honey.
Last time I gave a speech, I was in high school. Miss Steinberg gave me a C minus.
Well, if only Miss Steinberg could see you now.
Hey, you got this, Dad. I mean, come on, you saved Spider-Man. I'm pretty sure that makes you an official superhero.
A superhero? Or, maybe I'm just a guy who doesn't give up.
Come on, honey.
Welcome, everyone. And before I hand it off to Mayor Osborn, I'd just like to say a few words.
So...
I think this gang war may finally be over.
Like, like over, over?
I mean, there's some loose ends still to be tied up, but...
Loose ends?
Well, a truck pulled away from the scene from a company called Consolidated Shipping. Something's not right about it. Just don't know what.
Well, maybe after this, we can grab some coffee, figure it out together.
Yeah.
Well, thanks, Jim. Couldn't have said it better myself, but I'll try. We all know that Officer Davis is a hero.
But, uh, instead of coffee, maybe we could have dinner instead? I could come over. I'll cook. Or we could, you know, meet at a totally neutral location for a completely normal meal, cooked by professionals.
For acts of extraordinary bravery, above and beyond the call of duty, it is my privilege to present Officer Jefferson Davis with the Department Medal of Honor.
Phone call, sir.
Kind of in the middle of something here, Jim.
Sounds urgent, sir.
Fine.
Congratulations, sir. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share this honor with my family. My wife, Rio, and my son, Miles. Without their support, I... I couldn't do what I do.
Yes?
I've worked many years for this moment.
Who is this?
Over the coming days, your company, your city, and everything you care about will be destroyed. People will beg you for help, but you won't be able to save them.
Listen, jackass, I get threats like this twice a week. Why don't you grow a pair and tell me what you want?
To watch you suffer.
Miles! Miles, are you okay? Miles! Miles! Peter! Come on, Peter. Miles! Miles! Right here, just stay with me. Thank God. Can you hear me, baby? Can you hear me? Peter? Go use my hand if you can hear me. Stay here. I'm going to find your father. Peter? Peter, wake up. Come on, say something, please.
Mom!
I know that was a kinda heavy cutscene. I know during my first time, which was a really sad moment. But I really liked how it speaks on this subject. And it really helped build into the second game, which is what I liked. But anyways, I know a lot of dialogue, a lot of cutscenes, wasn't able to talk much, but... There's one entrance for the video.
Mom!
Mom!
Damn it! Hurry! Ink. Slipping!
Miles, Miles!
Are you okay? Nice going, kid. Are you okay?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes. Are you, are you okay?
I'm alright, Mom. Alright. You sure you're okay?
Yes, I'm gonna be alright. I'm gonna be alright, I'm gonna be alright.
Alright, Lisa, I have to go find Dad, okay?
No, wait. Miles, no! Miles, no!
Dad's in there. I'll find him.
Stay here! Please!
Dad's alive. I know it.
I know not a people, not a lot of people like the MJ and Miles missions in Spider-Man games. But this one is definitely one of my favorites.
What the hell?
Not because of that. I just like this cutscene because it speaks on some hard topics. I love it when it's good and bad. A lot of games like to stay away from stuff like that. I really liked how this one brought light to it. Showed them, showed the players what it's like. But enough on that. Gotta wait for him to stop checking. What's... Oh, okay. Gotta wait for him to move? Haven't played this mission in so long. Stealth missions always suck.
Can't cross yet.
Oh, can't cross yet. Oop. This was the scary part, walking over a group of dudes. Hey, I really thought I could go because I didn't see his light. Man, I can see all my failures. I remember when I was little, I don't think it works now, but I ran through the entire thing from here and immediately got up to the stand. Might be a little speedrunning trick, but...
Enough! We have to leave. Now!
Dad? 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 Dad, no! Wake up, Dad. Wake up. Wake up.
I'm sorry for your loss.
Do I know you?
I'm Peter Parker. I was at City Hall when... Look, I know you don't know me, but I just wanted to say...
I know what you're going through.
Uh...
That's what you were gonna say, right? Or it all gets easier with time? Or don't worry, it's a part of God's plan.
I'm sorry. I was just trying to help. I know.
I'm sorry about that. I don't know what I'm gonna do with him.
That scene not only hits hard because it introduces Peter to Miles, but also...
I'm sorry, Jeff.
Sets up Miles's story. But I know with all that tough topics... But anyways, let's go. This one is gonna be probably gonna be...
No, I told you I can't start a manhunt based on a hunch from Spider-Man.
But I'm telling you, he's the guy!
Get me some solid evidence and we'll talk.
Solid evidence, right. Hey, it's me.
Hey, so what are you thinking?
I'm thinking I screwed up, and that kid lost his father.
I know you too well to say you should give yourself a break. What about the police? Do they have any leads on Lee?
They're not even looking for him. Even Yuri doesn't believe me.
Then it's up to us to find him. I've been doing some research. Go to this address. Martin Lee bought a controlling interest in this recycling center last year.
You think he's hiding out there?
Maybe. We know he's not at Feast. If he's not at the recycling center, maybe you'll find some evidence as to where he might be.
Yeah. Good work, MJ. I'll let you know what I find.
Oh, one more thing. I talked with a detective about questioning the arrested demons. They're all claiming Martin Lee has the power to, quote, corrupt people.
Corrupt? What does that mean?
They say it's sort of like mind control. It brings out the negative part of you, makes you do things you wouldn't normally do.
Hmm, sounds a little far-fetched.
This is coming from a guy who can run up walls.
She's got a point there. Far-fetched, but he can walk walls. There's so many cell towers in one area.
When Spider-Cops own a job, come hell or high water, the job gets... She'd never admit it, but the chief was warming up to Spider-Cop. His casual disregard for by-the-book thinking was a breath of fresh air. She'd come around someday.
It sucks that he never really monologues in Spider-Man 2. That would've made it way better. But I obviously think I didn't make the game. I'm gonna hit this figure out later.
I have to once again defend myself against the spurious claims from McDonald Mac Gargan, aka The Scorpion. Yes, as I fully disclose, I bankrolled the experiment that gave him superior strength, speed, and that unsightly cyborg tail. The idea was to create an anti-Spider-Man who is not...
MJ's hunch was right. Place is crawling with demons. Gotta take these guys out, then have a look around.
Alright, stealth missions. Stealth missions are pretty fun sometimes. I really should not have attacked them like that. But now they're all on me. One of them's on to me. Nobody's on to me. Stealth missions in these games are practically all about waiting for one of them to become captureable. There's no actual difficulty to them. It's like one giant puzzle. It's like Jenga. You gotta take some pieces out, and they're ready to be taken. And boom. Not even spotted.
Okay, that's all of them.
The door, okay.
High-security lock. They use these on banks, not recycling centers. Maybe if I can find where it gets its power from. Looks like I could override the circuit. Need my electric webs. Well, that did something. Looks like the circuits need a little more juice. Uh-huh. There. Looks like the circuit's still stable. Maybe there's another junction box close by. Almost there. One more box should do it.
Alright, last box. And boom, crack it open.
That's it.
Second floor, not bottom floor. Pointless backflips. Just randomly backflip out of nowhere. It's so funny when these characters just do random backflips for no reason.
Oh, man.
Again, this makes for an awkward moment.
These must be where they're planning to attack. Wait. These are Osborn campaign offices. All the paths originate from the same address. Explosives from Fisk's construction site. Lots of high-tech equipment. Maybe later I can recycle this stuff into some weapons of my own.
Can't remember which one it was. Which gadget that was.
Truck bombs? This is crazy. This wasn't a gang war. The demons were stealing from Fisk to go after Mayor Osborn.
Hey, did you find Lee?
No, but you were right. Lee's using this place as a front for the demons. Bomb-making, gun-running?
Oh my God.
And it looks like they're planning another attack, this time on Norman Osborn's campaign offices.
We must have some kind of beef with Norman Osborn.
I found an address here. I think it's their staging area. If I hurry, I might be able to stop them.
Be careful.
My X button stopped working.
Martin Lee and the demons are planning another attack, this time on Norman Osborn's campaign offices.
Are you sure? We've had a lot of false leads in the past week.
Trust me on this one. I'm sending you the address of a recycling center. You'll find all the evidence there.
Got it. I'll get those campaign offices evacuated. But if you're wrong about this, you're gonna help me find a new job.
Cops don't take too lightly in this situation. But we're almost there, so just keep swinging around.
Consolidated Shipping. A lot of guys. I should try to do this quietly, but also with style.
Another stealth mission. Let's go. Whoa, what is this?
I can use that stuff I found at the recycling center. Nice. Love using bad guys' own weapons against them.
What is this? Oh, yeah, that too. I screwed that one up, but I like using those gadgets for stealth missions. They're just more convenient. He started the scene. It's never good. Ooh, snipers. Get rid of snipers immediately. Because if you're just down there, all of the snipers will see you. You never really do those takedowns in this game, so I just wanted to do an extra one. What? Why did he fall? I thought he couldn't fall if he was on a ledge. Well, looks like I'm gonna be doing this. Sometimes you can get lucky and trip mine two people together. And they're really good for taking people down too, since they instantly web to a surface.
Lee's not out here. Better check inside.
Before we check inside, new skills. This one, I wish I knew about that one earlier. Alright, let's see what's in here. Ooh, that's a big map. That's a big map. Huh, okay. These guys are armed and dangerous.
Invoice from an auto shop. Pale Horse Rides. That's one expensive tune-up. This is bigger than I thought. Looks like the demons have an army.
I absolutely hate these flash leads. Yeah, especially when you play Spider-Man 2 too much and try to do all those parries. Oh, yeah, you can't web these guys. Because they just cut your web. You also can't dash to them because they dodge.
Hey, MJ. I think I stopped the demons' attack on Osborn's campaign office.
Nice. Did you find Lee?
No, but I found something we should look into. Place called Pale Horse Ride.
Sounds familiar. I'll check it out and get back to you.
These bitches are so annoying. See, there we go, there's two of them. Ooh, that one got three. Oh, yeah, but these gadgets on these guys. But if they're on the ground, obviously you can zip to them, and they just dash around the stage. So annoying. There are a few things I hate in games, and it's beefy characters. There are a few things I hate in games, and it's beefy characters.
Well, this is new.
No, 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 this one's mine.
Alright.
I'm executing this son of a...
Hey, that's not how we do things. Down!
Code SM-1.
Whoa, whoa! Before we do this, who the hell are you guys?
Code SM-1, code SM-1, holding for orders. Copy code SM-1, I have a visual. Hold for Silverbird.
Nice entrance, solid eight out of ten. Nine out of ten.
Release him, he works with us.
Yuri, explanation, please?
This is Silver Sablenova, head of Sable International, a private security force, paid for by Mayor Osborn.
Oh, the mayor has a pet army now?
Next time you get in my way, I will not be so gentle.
Go. We'll talk later.
Dual purpose.
Hey, sorry about that Sable thing. I should've told you earlier, but it all happened so fast.
It's okay, we're still best buds.
We're not best buds.
Well, that took a dark turn.
Anyway, Sable has the mayor's ear and unchecked authority. We've searched that...
As I have a second here, we're about at the end of the video, but all letters finished.
Address you gave me, found plenty of evidence of a bomb plot, but nothing that leads back to Martin Lee.
I'm working on that. Hey, MJ.
Hey, so I dredged up some records on Martin Lee's other business holdings. He's got places all over the city.
Huh, the locations line up with a map I found at that shipping business. I'll check them out.
Let me know what you find at each one, and I'll work on building a case.
You got it. I'm headed to Lee's office at Feast to see if I can learn more about why he's doing this and what he's got planned next.
Okay, say hi to May for me. Wait, you don't think she's in danger, do you?
No, Lee's only got one target on his mind: Norman Osborn.
Alright, well, this will be the end of the video. I always tried to get a face shot of Spider-Man, but I can't. But anyways, this will be the end of the video. See you guys in the next one. Peace.